Seven o'clock, I'd like to call a meeting to order. If I have you on, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy, is your cover roll, please?
Deanna.
Here?
Deanna.
Here?
Amy Charlie.
Yes.
Deanie Navy.
Here.
Michael Deena.
Here.
Karen Harris.
President.
Here's Kimmy.
Here.
Of course.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? Move it.
Second.
Move it second at all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? For second. Wow. Second, here, roll call.
Deana.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Deanna.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Deanna.
Yes. Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening would like to address the board on any issue? Okay, move on into communications, correspondence, and information items. Letters and use letters. It's a great legislative news. See what makes it through.
Way too much work.
Yeah. FOIA requests. They're two, they're answered. Committee reports.
A couple of those. Planning and zoning, met last night. Had three action items relative to reworking some boundaries on a couple of outlots by Meyer, cleaning up stuff, cleaning up a number of literally spelling and numerical adjustments in the UVO document, and a little bit of boundary rework with what's left at Sycamore Business Park. Just cleaning up easements in there that will allow somebody to take that whole site and not have to build a reason, so they're vacating that and confirming that. And then we did do a workshop on updating our UVO. It's not a full-blown changing, starting, scratching, really just a peek and a touch-up. So represented some NIU governmental studies who were there, shared some information. There were people from the public there as well, different venues and other community bodies. And then we broke into three groups and they had a zoning map of it. It was just more about comments and thoughts where we might want to adjust some things and we literally wrote right on the stuff and then reported that data, report back to us at the June meeting and then really buttoned it up by July because we're not digging into the deep part of it. Our group, we did all the work because we had most markers on our ground. So, but we looked at like a lot of the development that was planned up towards, you know, Plank Road, Peace Road up in the northeast. There are some agreements there that are set to expire here in the next couple of years, which will likely expire with regards to some of that. And that will probably go back to an R4 or a rural residential more likely, which is mostly what's up there anyway. There were a survey done as well, and the survey data reflected that most people are comfortable with being on a parking in downtown, you know, other than high-volume times, but they generally like that, whether they're a business owner or general public, that they all want to see the pathways continue, walking and bike paths, and continue to connect those and make it easier to get around into spaces. And that most people think there's enough multifamily housing, they want to stay single-family going forward. So, I'm not sure that's 100% accurate, but that was the feeling in the survey. And then we did look at, you know, where those paths would connect and where we might expand future industrial manufacturing because we are getting down to the last few lots of that that aren't landlocked. And the logical place for that is kind of directly south along Peace Road as you're going kind of south and west of the senior living development there. That's a natural place for that to expand. And that there might be some small residential pockets kind of behind the Meyer going in that direction and which actually would put a few more houses in Mayfield Township, believe it or not. It's kind of right near the border over in that area as well. And there's apparently someone other than Mr. Granger looking at some senior 55 and older developments more towards just north of Jewel and that kind of as you're going up towards North Pro Road. So, filling in some of those gaps with some 55 and older housing. Some people that were there that were thinking of that some development that they were interested in. The summary of that. And then SEF, just real quick, we didn't have a meeting, but we did farewell in the DeKalb County. Out of 130 groups, I think we were 27. And our goal was 15,000 and as of today, we're at about 13,300-ish. Still a few mail-ins that will come in. And then with, hopefully with the matching funds, we should be over that $15,000 goal. So, thanks to everybody who donated and to any organization, not just SEF.
Granger. Any other committee reports? In terms of committee assignments, I've heard from some people, I haven't heard from others. If I haven't heard from you, I'm going to assume that you don't have any objection to staying with the committees that you already have. If you want to change though, let me know. I will, let me know before the end of the week, before Friday. And on Friday, I'll send the list to Kathy with the committee assignments and she can push those out and we can approve those the next week. Next item would be the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. I'm relaxing my duties, forwarding the slides. I'm going to kick it off with just reminding everybody about our mission, empowering all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision is that the school district to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day. Our core values, which are honesty, trustworthiness, integrity, equality, empathy, respect, citizenship, digital citizenship, responsibility, and collaboration. And the five questions that our professional learning communities ask and discuss, what do we want students to know and learn, what do students want to know and learn, how will we know if they learn it, what do we do if they don't learn it, and what do we do if they already know it? And with that, that takes us to the first item on the superintendent's report is a report from our life school. So, we've covered all of the schools in the districts that are presented here at the beginning of each month. And we are to life school tonight, so we're excited to have them with us and to share some news about life school. So, I'm going to turn it over to Rhonda.
All right, thank you. So, I'm just handing out our life school curriculum units because I think it's a good refresher, just to remind everybody what we do and the kinds of skills that we work on. Walter, Michael.
Thank you.
We've been fortunate, we think, my parent professionals are here as well, Monica Missambrink and Janet Rowe, to have been working in person since September, all five days. And it's really worked out well for the group of students that we work with. It's important, I think, for them to be in our group. We've really, our day has stayed exactly the same as it was last year. And also been able to do quite a bit of volunteering, some of which we've shifted to like Spartan Food Pantry, you know, places that we're able to go to and just be the only ones there. But we've really been able to make that work. And I really have to credit those two ladies back there, the parents, and of course the school district for all the help that they've given us and code guidelines and trying to stay within all that stuff. So, so take a look at this briefly because then that will lead me into the Project Search piece of this, all right? So, the culmination every year, this is the third year that we've been involved with Project Search as a community. So, culmination of our life school year, we really like our students to have at least one year of life school so we can really introduce these skills, these life skills. When they come to life school, that math, English, science, those kinds of standards kind of filter away. We still work on those skills with them, but we're not looking so much for growth in that area, keeping them where they're at, working on their budgeting skills, time management skills, cooking, all the things you see in there. And then Project Search has a application process, so not just everybody gets into Project Search. They apply, they go through an interview, and then Project Search lets them know if they've been accepted or not. So, this year, we've had three candidates be accepted as Project Search interns. One of them is with us tonight. Want to stand up real quick? Want to come up here with me? All right, come on. This is Sheridan, and I'm so glad she's here. Sheridan is the only one of the three that hasn't been here since kindergarten. The other two guys have been Sycamore students since kindergarten. So, do you want to talk or do you want me to? Okay. Sheridan, I'm so glad you're here. She's fine, but. So Sheridan is 19, she's lived in Sycamore. Oh, you're 20 now.
Maybe you should, maybe you should talk.
And before moving to Sycamore, she's lived in Washington and so does Arizona and Missouri. And as her first year of life school, she's grown so much and made new friends. She enjoys spending time with her family, singing, dancing, and playing basketball. Project Search will be helpful by continuing to teach her the skills she's able to, so she will be able to live independently. And with this opportunity, she wants to obtain a job in retail. Our other two candidates that were accepted are Jonah Malecki, who's also, like I said, been a Sycamore student since kindergarten. He attended South Prairie School, he loves to sing and dance and watch movies, do voices, and listen to music. Project Search will help him to be able to learn more about different skills that will be needed throughout life with the help of Project Search. Jonah wants to be a cashier at a grocery store. And then John Eng is our third candidate, John's 20. He grew up in Sycamore, attended Southeast Elementary School. He enjoys listening to music, watching sports, playing video games. In life school, he volunteers once a week at the Sycamore Community Center, so he rides a transvec once a week from life school out there and back again. Well, on a grow vocational farm, that you know, Food Hub's, Spartan Food Pantry, Meals on Wheels, he's at the United Methodist Church Food Pantry, he's excited to be a part of Project Search with Jonah and Sheridan, would like to get a job at Upstaging, is our concert guy. Sheridan also volunteers once a week at Tales with another student, and they also ride the transvec independently. It's called TransDev now, but you know, we are. On Friday, so they hop on the bus from life school and go to Tales and get a ride back. So, that's, like I said, I wanted to pass out the information to you guys to know, so you understand the skills that we're working on at life school and then Project Search really brings that home. So, Project Search is a, oh, there's a word, it's a collaboration of Northwestern Medicine, DeKalb School District, 428, Ramp, and Illinois Department of Human Services. So, those four agencies partner together to make this happen. So, and at the end, those questions are always like, what if I don't want to work in the hospital? The idea is throughout the year, they go through three internships in Project Search at Northwestern Hospital in different areas. But Ramp and Department of Rehabilitation Services or Department of Human Services always talking to them and working with them to find out what they do want, and then they help them apply for these jobs in other areas, Target for instance, or Upstaging. We have three candidates, or excuse me, three students that are there this year, two of them are Sycamore students and one was one of our out-of-district students. And two of those students have accepted jobs already. So, it's exciting and they really, once they get partnered with these agencies, which is what would be the normal, what would happen normally after life school anyways, I would make sure that the parents contact these agencies and continue to get these adult services for their students. Project Search really makes that happen for them. So, that's another great piece of it. Hey David, did you end up to be able to get that video?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to have him show this video. It's from Cincinnati Children's Hospital, which is where Project Search originated. And then I'll answer any questions that you might have.
My hours are 7:30 to 4:15 every day.
Inside one of Cincinnati's top banks, you'll find new employee Edie Bowman crunching numbers. However, Edie's journey to getting hired at Fifth Third Bank's central file room is different than most. She has a disability, autism, but that didn't stop her from pursuing her goal of getting a full-time job after high school.
I've been using good organizational skills, being part of a team, and giving good eye contact.
Edie joins a growing list of graduates from a program that started at Cincinnati Children's called Project Search, the brainchild of Aaron Riley.
I was the nursing director of the emergency department here at Cincinnati Children's, and I happened to look out in the lobby and was struck by the fact that many of the people coming to us as patients were people with disabilities. And yet, when I checked behind the scenes, there weren't many opportunities for these young people to grow up and continue to be involved in children's as employees.
Aaron partnered with Suzie Wachowski at Cincinnati Children's and together they came up with the Project Search curriculum. It focuses on young people with disabilities between the ages of 18 to 22. In their final year of high school, those students leave the classroom and move to Cincinnati Children's or another host business to intern for the entire school year.
Many of the young people have had low expectations for them from family members, from schools, and we have to change that in a very short period of time. And so, we're looking at things like grooming and hygiene, communication, problem-solving skills, independence in time management.
Project Search is an intensive nine-month course for a group of 10 to 12 students that involves a combination of classes, skill assessments, skills training, and evaluations from a team including the instructor, managers, and skills trainers. Each day begins and ends with an instructor keeping them on track.
We do a lot of reflection in Project Search every day. At the end of the day, we come back and I'll ask them, what did you learn about yourself today? What can you take from today and improve tomorrow? Because I feel like that's so important.
Today, Project Search is beyond the walls of Cincinnati Children's and has expanded to more than 500 programs across the US and the world.
Our overall employment rate among all of our programs is 75.5%, and that makes us one of the best, if not the best, transition program in the United States.
We understood that individuals with disabilities through Project Search is an untapped market. It was an untapped recruitment stream that we could have access to, bring them in, train them on the types of jobs that we have, give them the skills needed so that they can transition into permanent employment. And we've seen great success with that here at Fifth Third, but we've also seen great success with employment in the communities as well.
Also expanding the variety of jobs, Project Search graduates now work in a range of industry sectors. Cengage, an educational services and publishing company, recently joined the growing list to offer not just training and marketable skills, but opportunities for career growth that includes benefits, incentives, and retirement options.
I'd love to run all my employees through those classes, I would, about budgeting and about money and how to handle difficult situations. That life piece combined with being in a real-life work environment is what makes Project Search completely different than anything else that I've ever seen, and that's why those folks are able to make that transformation be successful.
A key part of the success is definitely that both sides see and learn something new about the other.
Changing the culture of families and the general perception of people with disabilities is what Project Search is all about. Just ask Edie.
My favorite thing about coming to work every day is getting all the work done and being on task.
To change the culture of businesses and organizations, to change the culture of just the general public about the perception of people with disabilities and what they can and can't do.
I'm awfully proud that because of this hospital and Project Search, there are thousands of people with disabilities working around the United States and the world that wouldn't have been otherwise had it not been for this program.
Okay, that's still my favorite video, there's quite a few out there now, but that sort of explains it pretty well. Does anybody have any questions? Michael?
How many participants do you have currently in life school?
Currently, we have 10 students at life school. And it looks like next year, we're shaping up to have nine. Now, that's a, you know, can fluctuate, but it was a perfect course this year because we weren't sure what it was going to look like. And we've got two classrooms, and Mark Exstrom came over and his guys, and they spaced everybody out, we were able to get five students in each room, and so 10 was our magic number this year. We've had as many as 14. And I did have the two students who were at Project Search, which technically may be, gave me 12, but they weren't with us at the Opportunity House building, they were at the hospital with that group over there. So, that's what we're looking at for numbers for this year, next year. Anybody else? All right.
Well, I would say that one piece of legislation that I hope does pass is the law that says that if you age out, if you're 22, you can at least complete the school year every quarter you have to move on.
Right. Lynn Riley and I have talked about that and some other pieces of legislation that are out there as well. And that would be, we did have a student age out on April 26th, and I said, you know, he really was an asset to our program and I wish he could have stayed till, you know, June 7th, but we had to let him go. So, or June 4th, whatever the last school day is for students. But we'll see, it's interesting to, you know, see what's out there for legislation. There's some kind of goofy stuff out there too, so everybody better. All right, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is the annual SRO School Resource Officer Report, and Officer Cooper is here to deliver that.
Evening, y'all. Good pleasure to see everyone in the new face. So, every year I go, I can go over kind of briefly what we kind of experienced this year and go figure this year, just like everything is, our numbers are way down for everything, which is a good thing, but also difficult. You know, now we back to school, I run myself ragged between the two schools, really all seven, and Stacy's still on medical leave. But she's doing better, she's recovering well. This year, typically accidents take the top list for things because of the drivers at high school, but this year it's actually identity theft. Identity theft for the district members that I took was approximately 126 cases. So, but I mean, that's not unique to the district, it's just kind of the state of the nation right now, unfortunately. But then accidents were number two at seven, and then from there, stop on violations, informational, custody disputes, things like that. It ended up being kind of the typical year for what we saw, just, you know, much reduced number. But I can say that the kids are all really happy to be back in school. We've had some interpersonal relationship issues, I think it's just from being away from each other for a full year, getting back, everyone back in their place, but over the last month, it's really improved. There for a while, it was a little crazy at the middle of school, but we've gotten better. So, but you know, it's been good, I still enjoy coming to school every day, you know, we're back in session, and I look forward to Stacy coming back with us. Any questions about our numbers?
The identity theft that you were talking about, is, are those cases where a student had their identity taken or where they were taking somebody else's?
Actually, the vast majority, if not all of them, were staff members whose identities were stolen and almost exclusively for only Department of Employment Security frauds. So, luckily, I think, if I remember correctly, only two staff members had anything happen outside of, you know, a fraudulent employment claim being filed in their name. But yeah, it was just a lot of headache for a lot of staff members. But like I said, all but two of them, I think was really, you know, they reported to us, reported to the state and their credit bureaus, and I think that was about as much harm that was done. The other two, some fraudulent credit cards with their name, but those were easily closed out, and I don't think any more harm other than that. But again, that was not unique to Sycamore alone. It was there for a while, our department was averaging, I think, five to seven excluding you. So, it was, it's quite something. Thankfully, it slowed down, but it was a scourge across the entire nation. Same thing I like to bring up is, for years now, the state is rumored about having a tip line that the state maintains, one that led kind of started with Colorado, it's safe to tell out in Colorado, and they kind of like the model for the nation where you could call, text, email, you know, concerns about yourself, about others, you know, both suicidal, bullying, you know, threats to school and safety, things like that. And more and more states have been adopting it, and for years, the state, our state has said that it's coming and it's finally here. So, for Illinois, it's going to be safe to help Illinois, and the great thing about it is it's run and maintained and paid for by the state. There is no cost to the districts that partner with this. I advocate that it's something that we should move towards, and Mr. Walden and I have spoken about it and Agnew has met with it and discussed it. What this is, is it's just, they have a curriculum that the state would come in with or provide to us that educates the students and staff, when to report, when to report it, you know, things like that. So, it's not something that we have to come up with and we have to educate. They've already done all this and they've taken it from other states, obviously, and haven't reinvented the wheel. But this provides a phone number, texting, email, websites, that gives kids an avenue to report things when maybe they don't. I know in the back of the high school IDs, and I believe all the, I think those school IDs too, but at least on the high school IDs, there's the mental health resource numbers. I know those have been used a couple of times this year a little, even with everyone being home. You know, I know a social worker and counselor said that this is going to be handy, and this will be yet another resource. But what this is great about this is in nights, weekends, and holidays, there's always someone there that will receive it and send it out to us. Now, for this, the school district would take the lead on that, but they really, I don't quite think it exists, but they really strongly recommend that you partner with the local police department and have a contact there. And obviously, we would, so, but yeah, they had it all set up, all we have to do is sign up with them, they kind of do some training with us, and then they give us the curriculum for the students. Just give you numbers for the last three years, for the, they kind of started rolling this out, but this year they're really pushing it. 2018, they had 2,700 reports received, 2019 was 2,400, and then 2020 was 2,900. So, but once this really gets going with the state, like with Colorado, they just saw year after year after year increase, and lots of benefits came out of it. So, do you guys have any questions about state to help? I know I talked about something similar this, years ago, and then COVID, but you know, with the state finally coming out with this, and it's great because it's a state-run thing, I think we're going to work towards maybe getting this up and running for the fall. All right?
Ryan, is that anonymous reporting or is that in any way tied to the person that's submitting the report?
I believe it's their choice. You know, it can be anonymous. In certain circumstances, it might be possible for us to find out some more information about it, so we need to verify or get more clarification, but it's really their choice. If they want to report with their name, they can, if they don't want to, they don't have to.
So, how would an anonymous report help?
For example, if someone was to text in that, you know, a student was contemplating harming themselves, then it would push an notification to, they require a minimum of five contacts, and one of those contacts being the law enforcement. It would push it to, I think, whoever would be most applicable, so if it's self-harm, then they would probably go directly to the law enforcement agency, and we could send someone to try to check on it, at least start the investigation, determine who that is, and try to get them help. Earlier this year, I got-
So, you'd have to try to figure out the identity?
Right.
The identity.
Well, if they give us, you know, a name, then that goes a long way to-
Yeah, but if it's an anonymous thing and they don't give you an ID.
Right. Well, the reporter can remain anonymous, but the goal is for them to give the information who the target is.
About somebody else.
Yes. So, it'd be kind of like a case I had earlier this year where a student reported to a social worker or counselor that the person they knew online was threatening to harm themselves. Came to me with it, I didn't have anything other than a Snapchat screen name. I didn't have anything other than a Snapchat screen name. And through the afternoon, ended up determining that that person lived in Southern Illinois. And local law enforcement agency went there, checked on the person, and then the people in the hospital was, they were in crisis. So hopefully, it won't be that extreme, and that'll work. Hopefully, whoever was reporting can give us at least, you know, name and some, a few details like that. But, you know, it's more localized, it will help us, you know, reach those students in crisis quicker in a more efficient manner.
Sounds like a great thought. I would assume the limitations on anonymity would kind of stop at the point of, say, reporting a fake threat to the school district that went?
So from my understanding, and we haven't yet gone through all the webinar training stuff. It's just kind of like the feeler phase of this. But I think there is some safeguards into that. But for other states, the occurrence of false reports is so low. It's actually, the vast majority, the top two issues are mental health and suicide-related. You know, and I think bullying rounds out the top three. So it's false reporting, just like, you know, honestly, crime in general. False reporting is way at the bottom. It's rarely a concern, but it's something that can be addressed if we need to. All right. Thanks, everyone.
So that's a definite go-ahead for us? I mean, we're definitely going to-
We're going to work towards it. And we got to meet with the state and do some more information gathering with them. I just briefly emailed with the administrator, for lack of a better term, for the program with the state. We just need to set up time that, you know, the police department and the school administration can all get together and do a, like a webinar or something with them. Kind of start signing up and stuff. But it's, from my understanding, it's fairly easy to sign up. We just have to make sure that we're prepared for it. And that's something we're working on this summer.
Great. It'll be nice to have a follow-up report. I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily go in a legal way.
When Officer Hooper brought it to my attention, we talked about it a little bit. Our tech department looked at it first of all, just to make sure that from a tech perspective, it was easy to implement. They liked it. We talked with the rest of the admin team. I've asked them to take a look at it. The feedback so far has been positive. Did make sense to do it this spring, so we'll do some work over the summer, get it up and running. And then, yeah, follow up once it's up and running. And then maybe even a demo.
Right.
That could do it for us.
Thanks, that sounds wonderful.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the item 5.03. It's approval of the 2021 amended school calendar. Every year, I'll talk about this, but Kathy really keeps the calendar. So if there's anything I can add, please let me know. So there's the calendar that we put out to the public, to our community, that they see. But behind the scenes, there is a much more detailed calendar that we file with the State Board of Education. It has to be approved by the Regional Office of Education first, and then approved by the state. We do that at the beginning of the year, actually prior to the beginning of the year. And there's all sorts of changes that happen during the year. And about this time, there were a couple this year, weren't there? And then inevitably, by the end of the school year, we have to get to a point where we, we have a final amended version of the calendar. It has to be submitted to the ROE first, and then to the state. Kathy has prepared that based on how we think the rest of the year is going to go. As long as that holds, you won't hear about the 2122 calendar again. We'll submit it at the end of the school year and move on. If, if something were to happen, we might have to revisit it. But I think we're probably pretty safe at this point. You get all that right? Any questions about that?
Is there a motion to approve the 2020-2021 amended school calendar? Has it been moved in second? Voice vote or all in favor? opposed?
Takes us to item 4.04, which is the return to learning update. So one of the topics I'll just kick off with was that we've, has been a challenge for us for the last several weeks. It's started to calm down now, our quarantines. The number of quarantined students is gradually starting to improve. I think we're down in the 300s finally, maybe lower 300s in terms of students, overall students that are quarantined. The vast majority of that is because students are coming off of that list. They've served, so to speak, those 14 days. We have had a number of students who've opted for remote learning. So we've had a decrease in in-person learning as well. So that's something that we've watched. In terms of COVID data, and I've got a couple of charts here on the next couple of slides, but 29% of residents in the county are fully vaccinated. 35% in Illinois are fully vaccinated. One of the things that Governor Pritzker is tracking in terms of the reopening is how many, the percentage of individuals who are vaccinated. But that just has to do with their first dose. So 35% of Illinois residents, 29% of the county are fully vaccinated. So things are also starting to move in terms of vaccination. So the county health department has scheduled a vaccine clinic for only 16 and 17-year-olds in order to kind of encourage those students and their families to consider and sign up to be vaccinated. They initially asked schools if schools wanted to host that, and we were willing to do that. But based on the feedback and the number of requests from schools across the county, they really felt like just one, one location would be best. So that's going to be held at the convocation center. You can sign up for an appointment, or you can do it as a walk-in. So you can do that either way. That's this Thursday, May 13. And as many of you probably know, the FDA has approved Pfizer for children ages 12 to 15. Did my numbers mix up tonight?
12 and above.
So there was some communication from the health department this morning. They are working on getting a clinic for 12-15-year-olds up and running as soon as possible. And because there are appointment slots available for Thursday, if they get the required go-ahead from agencies within the state, they'll open that up on Thursday, 12-15-year-olds. So they've started to work on that already, which is a good sign. It's another option for students and their families. In other COVID data, Illinois will transition to the bridge phase this Friday. It's going to have a huge impact on schools. Minimal impact. It really has to do with capacity for events. Schools are kind of treated separately. There are, you know, some spectator events that we host. So this has a little bit of a carryover there. But we are also headed to Phase 5 on Gene 11. So as long as the metrics hold and everything remains stable, or even decreases, I think that that bodes well for the state. To go back to vaccines for just a second, I'm not anticipating that COVID vaccines will be required for students anytime soon, at least not until FDA approves Pfizer approval on an important basis, not just emergency approval. I don't anticipate that vaccines would be required for staff either. So they'll be available. A large number of our staff, through some general feedback from the county, a large number of our staff have received vaccines, not necessarily everybody. But one of the things I think has happened, and we talked about this here recently, is that if you look at the dashboard, the positive cases in the quarantines really are in our student population. Really haven't had many, many positive cases or even quarantines with the staff. So maybe that's vaccines, maybe it's something else, but it's good news. And overall, state, region 1, and county health metrics have been very stable for the last couple of weeks. So this is region 1, 30-day trend. It really mirrors the county trend. You can see that we've kind of been up and down a little bit, the purple dots are every time there was an increase. So other than that, what you've seen is stable or decreasing. So it gives you an idea of what, what the region, as well as really kind of what the county has looked like over the last 30 days. This is the county case rate, so number of cases per 100,000 residents. That number's still a little high. It's over the threshold. It is coming down currently, but we saw a peak here a couple of weeks ago. These numbers are generally about a week or so behind. So there's a little lag there. I would anticipate next week we'd see that. The other metric that we have been watching is the county test positivity rate. You can see that we've been under that threshold for a while. We got really close about a week or so ago. But for a variety of reasons, I think that trend has gone down. So we're back in a good place. Both region and county averages have been around 5% in terms of test positivity. The county rose about 5% over the last 10 days. Region 1 is about 5.3, 5.4. So a little bit higher, but really tend to be in the same ballpark. So those are good signs. When we looked at this two weeks ago, test positivity, I believe, was moderate. The other two, new cases per 100,000, new cases were both substantial. So you can see things are starting to improve there as well. These are, again, in the school metrics that we track. That takes us to planning for the 2122 school year. So I anticipate being able to have a final plan on May 25th. And really, I'm not sure that there's going to be a lot of new information. What I anticipate on May 25th is just finalizing some of the things that we're working on currently. We are planning, so I want to stress this. I've had a lot of people ask me this, emails, a couple of phone calls. What are we doing in the fall? What's the plan for the fall? But I just want to be really clear about this. We are planning for a five-day, full-day return in August. And we've been doing that for the last couple of months here, really. So I know parents have a lot of questions. We've been through an up and down year this year. I get it. But I just want to make it really clear. Our plan for the last couple of months has been five days, full days, full return in the fall. We're revising the actual return to learn plan itself in preparation to get it on the district website. Mr. Olson has helped me with that. All students will be identified as in-person learners. And the state board is really, really pushing this, this idea to get everybody back. And I think with metrics continuing to improve, I think that's going to be easier and easier to do. However, the state board is also recommending that students who are at risk for severe illness or live in a household where somebody in the household is at risk for severe illness, we still make an accommodation for that. So we will do that as well. We've, we're working on a form that, that we'll make available on the district website. That's gone back and forth, kind of the district-level team here recently, but I made it available to the admin team as well, getting some feedback from them and updating it. We'll have one form, so parents can download it off the website, print it out, take it to the doctor's office, have them fill it out. They can download it, email it, they can print it, fax it, whatever they want to do. They can get that to the doctor's office and start gathering that, that information in those signatures. Really don't have a good handle on how many students are going to fall into that group. I anticipate that it's going to be pretty small compared to the rest of the district. But we just don't know until we start to get those forms in. The deadline for those forms will be June 4th, the Friday, June 4th. That gives us a little bit more time to not only get the plan ready, but give, gives parents that time to talk to their physician, their mental health professional, if that's the case, to get those forms filled out and get them back to us. The admin team didn't really feel like they needed them before June 4th. So that kind of works out for everybody. Gives, gives everybody an opportunity to get the forms filled out, get the information that we need, and then get those forms in. That will really drive the final details in terms of planning for the fall, and especially supporting remote learners. Building level teams, so K5, 6, 8, and 912 are finalizing plans to support the remote learner. Long-term remote learners are a little bit easier, I think, to plan for. The real challenge has been those short-term remote learners. And really, the students that will fall into that group are students who may be quarantined. So at the K5 level, our plan is to hire teachers who will work with those remote students. And because we don't have a good feel for how many students that'll be, we're going to hire a couple of teachers who may cover no more than two grade spans, so K1, 2, 3, 4, 5. If we need additional teachers, then we'll absolutely look at doing that. We want those to be Sycamore teachers. But those students will receive instruction from an actual teacher who will work with them remotely. Those long-term students. In grade 6 and 12, we really want our teachers to continue to work with our students. Schedule for middle school, and in particular, the schedule for high school, is much different than at the elementary level. So we'll provide those opportunities for our staff to work with those students as much as possible. In the event that we can't make that happen, then we will make virtual classes available. Illinois Virtual School is the most likely. And we've looked at a couple of different platforms. Apex, for example. But Illinois Virtual School really seems to be the platform that we think will work best. Illinois Virtual School's been around for several years. They hire Illinois, is B-certified and licensed teachers. So they're, they are, they have credentials just like any other teacher in the state of Illinois. But again, we're going to try to get our students paired up with Sycamore teachers as much as possible. That's kind of the fault of that. That enables us to not have to ask teachers to parallel teach like they've been doing this year. We will not require that or expect that of any teacher in the district. As these conversations have gone on, as you can imagine, there may be some situations where it's just advantageous for teachers to consider parallel. We have the tech to do that. We're not going to ask teachers or require teachers to do that. But in some cases, if they come to administration and they feel like that's the best option, absolutely, we're still going to consider that. So there may be situations where, in a short-term situation, you know, like a quarantine, that it just makes sense to, to work with those students using the technology that we already have, that teachers have used and are trained on, to use that for a week, 10 days, 14 days, to get those quarantined students or students who are out on a short-term remote situation through that time period. One of the variables right now is whether or not there's going to be, you know, what does quarantine look like in the fall? It's still 14 days. 10 days, is it going to be 7 days? Will we be quarantining at all? You know, if the number of students vaccinated starts to get high enough, herd immunity, if we start to approach that in our communities, I'm not sure that we'll get there, but we'll see. We're going to plan for that this spring. And if we don't have to use that in the fall because quarantine guidelines have changed, that's a lot easier now to kind of fall back to what we've done in the past. And if you've worked in schools, you're aware that sometimes we do homebound, we provide a homebound instruction for students who are out for 10 days or more. It's always required a physician's note, kind of like we're requiring already. We're used to doing that as well. So we'll continue to make plans for that. And then if quarantine guidelines change, and in my opinion, they won't get worse, they're going to get less strict, we can always back off of that as needed. So we're kind of ready for the worst-case scenario. Talked about short-term remote students. One of the other things I want to make really clear is that we are planning for a full Oscar program in the fall. It'll still be scaled down over the summer. I think the limit was 100 students, if I remember correctly. But in the fall, it will be a full-blown Oscar program. So I want to make that really clear, clear as well. One of the other things we've talked about recently is the start and end times for the school day. And after many conversations throughout the district, I'm going to recommend that we stick with our standard start schedule and that we keep it as it is. Middle school and high school first, elementary second. There's a lot of research out there that indicates that teenagers have trouble falling asleep at night. Therefore, they need that extra sleep in the morning in order to get going and start their day later. So I gave a lot of thought to pushing back the start of the day for high school students because of that research. Mr. Reinecke and I met with high school staff and administration and really looked at what the current schedule looks like, what it looked like in the past, and some changes that maybe could be made to, could be made to this schedule moving forward. What we found is that there's really a lot more flexibility with the high school day already. And there could be a little bit more flexibility added for high school students already that allow them to start school a little bit later. In fact, we offer that, that option in some ways. So correct me if I'm wrong, because you're probably more knowledgeable about this than I am. But juniors and seniors have an opportunity to flex that first period of the day, right? So they don't necessarily have to be there at the start of the day at 7:45. They can come in at around 8:30. That's something that we already offered them the opportunity to do. We do offer zero hour, but for the most part, again, check me if I'm wrong, that's younger students, freshmen and sophomores. So we already offer some flexibility in the high school day. So we're going to continue to take advantage of that. But this is an area that we're going to spend some time continuing to review next year, K12, and kind of take a look at how all the schedules mesh together. Also talk about this a little bit later, what the date, what the daily schedule looks like at all levels. So I think there's an opportunity to really reflect on what we've learned this year under COVID, the opportunities that we've created, kind of because we had to. And now we can implement it and kind of use it differently. And now we can implement it and kind of use it different ways because they're just at our disposal to really kind of look what the daily schedule looks like at all three levels. So we're going to do that. I would rather, if we're going to make changes like that, or as a result of those conversations, I would rather do that all at once instead of making some changes here this spring for next school year and then potentially making some additional changes the year after that. What I'd really like to do is just make sure that we're looking at all this information, making the right decision, giving people an opportunity to look at it, give us feedback, go back to the drawing board if we need to, vet that, and then make a recommendation to the board. And not just kind of next year, I would say a little earlier than this next year, but next spring, make a recommendation for what we think we need to look like moving forward. So that's my plan in terms of start and end times, and what we're kind of looking at in terms of the school day next year. One other potential change we are looking at for next year is adding scheduled late starts so that our PLCs, our professional learning communities, and have talked about those five questions that they ask themselves and discuss, giving them some time to meet. They've had that time this year. They've had more time to do that this year than they've had in the past because we don't always have students that fill in Fridays currently, but prior to that, you know, other days as well. That's something that we don't want to lose. And if we can schedule that time in little increments throughout the school year, that adds up throughout the school year. We think that that will be beneficial for our staff. But there are some logistics that still need to be worked out. So that's one change that we may make for next year, but we want to do that without discussing it with you guys. One way or another, I'll know what our recommendations might be. I do want to go back to transportation for just a second because if this changes in the future, I think people, I think it's good to have kind of a baseline and there was a question to go over this. If it doesn't change any further, but we stick with staggered starts, then everybody kind of understands where we're coming from. I will tell you that transportation is one of the most complex tasks in the school district. I don't know how Kathy H. can do it. She's got software that helps her with everything, the routes and the whole nine yards, but it is unbelievably complex. Transportation Department's done a great job being flexible, meeting the needs wherever possible. I think Kathy is on the Len Riley speed dog, getting students moved around and picked up and dropped off. It's been unbelievable. She's done a great job. And not just with Special Ed, but with a lot of our students. Bus drivers are among the most challenging positions to fill right now. So there are a lot of certified teaching positions that are hard to fill. Special Ed can be really hard to fill. Science and math, especially at the high school level, can be really hard to fill. Substitute teachers are becoming harder and harder to find. My experience is that school bus drivers are among the most difficult to find. And that's gotten harder and harder over the last several years. There are a lot of new requirements for bus drivers, so when you're going through your training, it gets harder and harder. There are more requirements that you have to fulfill. It's just unbelievably hard, and that's a really tough job. You know, you're not just riding the bus, getting kids to and from school. You're managing the behavior, keeping them safe during the winter. During the winter, you're watching the roads, and it's a tough job. They're harder and harder to find. Previous years, when all the schools started about the same time and ended about the same time, we had 21 different routes. Obviously, that requires 21 drivers and 21 buses. Moving to staggered starts reduced that number to 15 and gave us some flexibility in the operation of our transportation this year. Of those 15 routes, we know we already need to fill six of those driving positions. We also know that that number may grow to over 10 drivers by the time summer gets and we get to next school year. So one of the reasons that staggered starts really helps us is it helps us manage our staff and the operation of buses, get all the routes done, and those sorts of things. Those numbers do not include our activity routes or our out-of-district students. So we do outsource some of the transportation for some of our out-of-district special education students. Not all of them, but some of them. But running activity routes at the end of the day is also a challenge. We do have some staff within the district who do that that aren't currently bus drivers. But a lot of those activity bus drivers are bus drivers, so they need to run their route, make it back, get the bus, and then take the football team to an away game or whatever the case may be. So that's a whole nother layer on top of what I've described so far. So my goal is to purposely review the school day, daily schedules and transportation for next year, again, prior to making any long-term decisions or recommendations. So I've thrown a lot at you about the last 10 minutes. I'm going to pause here for just a second, see if there's any questions left.
When you bring a final plan, I don't have an answer to this yet. The short-term quarantine, is it our hope that those students would stay with their classroom teacher or will it be abundantly clear to parents that they perhaps would be with some other teacher during their quarantine time?
It's a really good question.
I feel like that's a communication piece that just needs to be abundantly clear to our parents when we present our plan.
So for a short-term remote student who is in, so I'm going to use Missy DeVito, because Sean's in that class. So Sean's moving to sixth grade, so this doesn't really apply, but this is fairwood finger for a second. If Sean was in fifth grade next year, had to be out for 14 days, the plan is that he goes back to the same classroom, Miss DeVito's classroom. And truthfully, I'm not aware, and I'll kind of look at Nicole and Nick to check me on this, really haven't heard from the admin team, but that appears to be a concern.
But so then she would be parallel teaching for that 14 days while he's out?
Well, not necessarily. We would not require her to do that, so I'm going to go back to the homebound example that I gave you earlier. So the student interview out for homebound in the past, you know, it was a lot of paper, too many copies of things, there's reading assignments, you do that from home. We've got some capabilities that we never had before. So for example, in some classes, teachers have recorded lessons, and then they save those. So they kind of stockpile. Here's my lesson on adding fractions. So not all, but in some cases, there's still maybe hard copies of materials. There's still maybe books that students are asked to read independently at home. But now we've got some other resources that we haven't had before. And again, teachers may come to us and say, you know what, I've got one student. He or she's really good in class. I think that they'll work independently, or I think that they'll be good listeners in their own class, whatever the case may be, that one student, I just want to do this parallel. If they come to us and want to do that, we're not going to tell them no, but we're not going to require them to do that, so.
Are we going to ask them to make that designation before the school year starts rather than, oh, I've just lost two students to quarantine? Who is going to do this with them?
So this is the challenge of the short term, and this is probably one of the last big challenges that our admin team is working through right now with the building level teams. So they're having conversations with teachers about what that looks like. What's the easiest way to do that for students? What's the best and easiest way to do that for students, for staff? There's a lot of different ideas out there that they haven't come down on yet. So one of the things I've really asked them to do is that we need one option that we know is going to work before the end of the school year. So that if we get, when we get there in the fall, we know at least one thing that we can do that's going to work for everybody. Now, with the summer, circumstances change, which I expect them to do. And even if we get into the fall and the school year starts, we're still going to be flexible. So if quarantine goes from 14 days to, let's say, seven, or let's say it goes to five, that looks totally different. You know, in a case where we might have assigned that student to a remote teacher temporarily, maybe we don't need to do that. Maybe, you know, we can give them materials and get them through those five days and then bring them back. So the idea is that we don't want to remove them from their class if they're out for quarantine. And let's say they do go and work with a remote teacher. We want them to come back to their original class. That's the idea. Making that happen, what's the easiest and the best way to make that happen is a little bit up in the air right now, but that's what our teams are working on right now. So I don't have a final answer, but it's, hopefully you can tell that it's something that we're wrestling with right now.
Nick, can you piggybacking off that, can you give us kind of an example or an average when there is a quarantine? Is it the case that it's a handful of kids from a classroom? Or that you're really knocking out, you know, half a classroom at a time? It seems with the reduced social distancing that we've done, you're more likely to have a significant portion of a classroom sent remote versus a small subset.
Sure, I can give you an exact number, but middle school, high school usually affects part of the grade area. I think we talked about that in the board meeting, just because of the transition, right, seven classes potentially. Where elementary, I would say it's, you know, it could just be a few, usually not more than eight, I would say, at the elementary. But at high school, middle school, that's much greater. But then we have to look at recess. We have to look at activities. So some of the larger numbers have to do with carryover and scores.
Eight out of how many students are in a classroom?
It could be up to 20.
Just because I know our numbers are not what they should be right now.
Yeah, well, elementary, they're pretty full. So that would be an elementary example. And that would be worst-case scenario. I would say approaching sitting right in the middle, and there's something beyond a classroom as well, potentially a lunch or recess, kind of an outlier, I would say. That would be a larger number for elementary, one case. Where high school, middle school, that would probably be fairly normal based on the seven classes.
And I can see how that would be a concern if you had a certain allotment of remote-only teachers, let's say, that are hopeless to transition this group to them. If you've suddenly got, you know, an influx of 10 or 15 kids one week as a quarantine, that might be overwhelming, whereas the rest of the time, it may be, you know, two or three, let's say. Sure, I guess we just don't know that until we get closer and maybe understand what the distancing guidelines are and what the quarantine guidelines could be. I kind of just state that out loud so that everyone understands the complexity of trying to figure out what this is going to look like in the future, acknowledging that we're trying to make this as easy on the teacher as possible.
I think there's a lot of, there are a lot of requests right now to local health departments, but really through local health departments to IDPH. And I, you know, we sit on, you know, calls once a week, you know, every other week, you know, between Nick and Cory and myself, just trying to keep tabs on that. We've got good connection with the health department. A lot of rumblings about, you know, the requests that are being made from schools about clarifying the guidance in terms of quarantine, social distancing, you know, for next school year. We'd love to see that as early as possible. The rumor is that we'll hear something in July. Hopefully that's closer to July 1st, not 31st, but we'll have to wait and see. My sense is that there's a lot of public pressure, you know, to really take away quarantine guidelines and social distancing guidelines. At the same time, remember that vaccines now are available for 12 to 17. You know, natural immunity is raising, increasing because people have been COVID-positive and then recovered. And youth really deal with COVID by and large much better than older, you know, adult groups. So I think you should take all those factors into consideration. I really do feel like IDPH is reflecting on what those guidelines need to be for schools in the fall, all while knowing that nobody wants another school year like we had this past year. So that's a great example. That's just how complex it can be. But I think we're going to get some revised guidance over the summer that, again, I can't see it being stricter unless things really pick over the summer. It's more likely that it's back off even further that will hopefully make things a little bit easier to manage.
We were talking today how big the 12 to 15 news was because it does become more complex and a greater impact at middle school, high school. That number becomes larger. And that's really where we've seen an uptick in ours the last few weeks. So to potentially take a lot of that off the table would be huge for us from just an academic momentum standpoint as well as a staffing standpoint. What we're spending our time doing right now is so much more simplified at the elementary level. When you're talking about one class potentially, one seating chart versus interrupting seven classes potentially, or trying to get staff on their free, so.
Sure. Correct me if I'm wrong, the current guidelines don't really account for vaccination. It doesn't do anything to change your quarantine status or duration.
No, it does. You don't have to quarantine. So it's been huge for us. And that's why that, Steve alluded to the staffing number. That's why our staffing numbers have gone down significantly. So we've even run into that with some students at the high school level, obviously, but have avoided quarantines, close contacts.
Okay, that seems to me, I wasn't aware of quarantine.
Yeah, so it's a significant change, potentially.
Is that something that we're pushing the message on? Again, I'm not trying to say the district should be saying, students, you need to go get this vaccine, or maybe even should go get this vaccine. But are we at least informing families of the benefits of getting a vaccine as far as the potential to not miss a significant portion of, you know, their school year?
I wouldn't say we're doing that across the board. I can tell you that in just conversations with Nick and Cory, that when the nurses and the health staff have those conversations with their parents, that question comes up quite a bit, you know, well, what if my son or daughter is quarantined? Well, we share that, and as you can imagine, it's quite like wildfire, but it's still a small group. It's not the whole district. So that's something that we can look at doing. You know, we still need to balance, I think, that not everybody's interested in that. But just having that piece of information may sway people that are kind of on the fence for sure.
Hopefully, we should promote, I think, the fact that we're encouraging people to get vaccinated. And this is one of the reasons why, so you don't have to quarantine if you are exposed.
Because the numbers can vary based on the class, too. So if it's an English class of 20 kids, or is it a P-class where you've got three of them in one gym, or 90 kids? We experienced that.
Do we track how many cases actually develop from quarantine groups? I'm just wondering how successful quarantine is for, you know... In other words, what I'm saying is maybe we can provide some background information to the powers that be that, hey, you know, all these people are quarantining and none of them are getting COVID. Maybe it's the opposite, you're on COVID, I don't know. But, I mean, are we tracking that at all? Do we look at, you know, whether, you know, people in a quarantine group are actually exposed and getting COVID?
Yeah, I would say that's pretty difficult because we're trusting them. They'll call us and let us know every most important days if something came up. We encourage them to let us know if they develop symptoms because then we may have to take new steps, right? That whole case may change a little bit. I would say it's easier if something does come up, I guess, where we're made aware that we have to be made aware. Those are the ones we know about. So we do know there has been some limited spread, I would guess, or potential, I should say. You can never know for sure, right? But some things are timed together. But I would say that is the outcome, right? Whether it's because the quarantine did its job or just because, we do know most of the time there's not a spread.
I would think that'd be useful data to have just to see, you know, if those people who we think are exposed are actually exposed and then developed COVID.
I just think the challenge is unless they develop symptoms, we're not going to do it for sure. So asymptomatic, there could be asymptomatic cases that never would be able to get tested because why would you? Which I think is probably often the case with youth is, even if they develop symptoms, it's one day, so then I'm probably not going to take my child to get tested or take them to get checked out because they're over it. I don't even know if it's still infectious, so.
I also think there's a lot out of our control. Just because they're quarantined from school does not mean that they're taking quarantine seriously and are not staying in their house, as I believe.
I would say we hear that.
Very good one.
Steve, just a quick question. So my big concern with the parallel learning is really the compromise of the quality that the teacher can deliver to the kids at really at all levels. And it seems like if you were to have vaccine widely accessible for the age groups that you posted, that addresses a lot of the middle school and the high school levels, which is great, which would make this a lot easier. But then, you know, it brings me wondering if all of this planning is building a system to accommodate a small segment of the population. You're going to ask for a huge shift. You might have one or two students quarantined, and then the rest of the class then has to basically participate in this parallel learning experience. Because it's not just the online student who's getting maybe a more filtered, limited experience, but in a lot of ways, the teacher's attention split, so the in-person students also get a more watered-down version of education. So I'm just wondering, are there other alternatives outside of a parallel learning model that we could explore, given the idea of... that we could explore, given the idea of it maybe being a lot fewer with the accessibility of a vaccine for those age categories?
Yeah, so for this year, probably, you know, we're done here the last four weeks.
Right.
So hiring additional staff to do that this year, I would say no, obviously. And we're not doing a parallel model in the fall, at least we're not going to ask teachers to do that.
Okay, so that's a for sure, it's not going to be, okay.
Yeah.
It's only if the teacher, well, if you're like, you know, if you're like, so you're.
Yeah. And, you know, they'll take that to their building administrator and talk about the circumstances. And again, the easy example is, you know, one student who's, you know, really well behaved and knows technology. Well, that's a piece of cake, you know? If you've got eight who are out in quarantine, even with a variety of kind of behavior, totally different ballgame. So we'll talk about those on a case by case basis as they're brought to us. But really, we're not, we will not ask teachers to do that next year.
Is the option, the opportunity for the student then? You mentioned that Illinois virtual school of sorts, is that something that would be available on a limited basis for stints of time, or is that just for full remote?
It would be for, well, so Illinois virtual school started at the high school level. And then it, you know, filtered down several years ago, filtered down to the middle school. And just recently, it's becoming available to elementary students. Still want our teachers teaching our students, if at all possible. But at the high school, middle school level, those classes are typically on a semester basis. So having, it's not really feasible for a student to go into an IBS class for two weeks in a quarantine and then come back out.
Right.
So the middle school, high school level were limited in doing that, you know. I really am not familiar with the elementary IBS courses. That's something I think we want to investigate, just to see if that's an option. That may be a little bit easier than high school, middle school. And I'm not sure that I would say it's easy just because of the pacing and the curriculum and the content and the progression through the school year is going to be different. So I don't know that that'll ever be a good alternative for the short term. But I think especially the middle school, high school is a reasonable alternative at those levels.
Good question.
Steve, just to talk about transportation. So getting, if the goal was to get back to a normal schedule or the old schedule, or however we phrase that, it's not necessarily, you know, you don't have to, we haven't even talked about it. It's not the distance between the kids and the buses. It's just the overall trying to stack those positions of a bus driver and the resources needed for twenty-one buses opposed to twenty-one bus drivers opposed to fifteen.
Yeah.
That's really the main.
That's really the main issue in terms of static, you know, from what we've done in the past to the stagger start and dismissal times. Now, the number of students on the bus is still an issue, and right now, we've been able to accommodate that. I think we've got a couple of buses that are tight right at that limit. But for the most part, I think we've been able to accommodate that now. Next year, I would, and I don't know this number, this is a guess. I would guess we're, as a district, probably around twenty-five percent remote right now, maybe it's highs thirty. That number's smaller at the elementary school, it's higher at the middle school and height of the high school. I drop my daughter off every morning, and the student lot is pretty empty at the high school in the morning. So as students come back and start riding the bus, that will be another issue. And if that guidance doesn't change, then we're looking at having to add additional drivers. So not necessarily a huge concern this year. We kind of dodged that bullet, but that could be a real concern next year. Just, but it goes back to, you know, hiring the number of drivers. And I would understand if we've got enough buses to do that, it's just trying to get enough drivers to do that. Steve, I'll add kind of another huge game, Julie, you know, this is, in the past, when everyone started at the same time, the high school would have kids that would arrive thirty minutes early and just sit there and wait. And then we'd get picked up thirty-five minutes after. Middle school, I think, had some of the same issues. That's non-existent issue. Now, part of that was due to COVID. We wanted to drop kids off right before, pick them up right after. But if we all started at the same time, we wouldn't be able to do that. They'd be back to getting, arriving way too soon and then having to wait around for buses. So that's been a huge deal.
So the anticipation would be, so I feel like this is a big misconception that's out there, at least in random neighbors I've talked to, friends, whatever. Is that even if the social distance guideline was non-existent, we said, oh, we all could be shoulder to shoulder again, would you anticipate that the schedule would still stay the same? We wouldn't make a change based on the fact that everybody can be closer to our bus?
Right now, I would say yes.
Okay.
It's good. And I didn't go back because I wasn't prepared about this.
I feel like that has been, I've just been hearing it in a lot of different places, whether that be at the grocery store, what we're hearing, he's dropping when I hear the word school or anybody talking about it.
I know the other way when I hear that.
See what's on the opinion is of me or whatever, or the district or whatever. But just trying to get as much knowledge of everything as possible. But that seems to be something that is reoccurring, is, oh, we should keep kids closer together, plus, and everything's back to normal. But that's not necessarily the case.
No, not necessarily. You know, the stagger, you know, there are some other benefits to the stagger start and end times. And I will also say that the times that we're using currently will not necessarily be the exact times probably that we'll use next year. We're still, we're still going to tweak those just a little bit. And part of that is coming out of conversations that the building teams are having. But I'd say it's probably going to be pretty close to that. Now, the difference is that elementary is getting out a little early right now. They would obviously go a full day, so that would be the other change at the elementary level.
Thank you for that. And then, I guess, you know, as I had, you're never going to answer every single question at next week's meeting, so I don't want to put that burden on you because there's always going to be things that come up. Because I've heard everything from, oh, what are you doing about snow days? I'm like, I'm not worried about snow days, I'm worried about the summer. But in all seriousness, that's a topic that's been brought up, you know, now that we're one to one. What does that look like? Volunteer, letting parents volunteer in the classroom again, like just those, I don't want to say minor details, but other details that aren't necessarily stopping the start of the school year.
Yeah.
And the preparation for that. Do we anticipate, is that just going to be over time that we're going to have to work on those type of things? Or, I mean, I know it's just two examples, but I'm sure there's more.
And I think that those are really good ones. And so the return to learn plan is going to focus on what it's going to take to get the school year started. We'll still continue to use the FAQ section on the website to gather those questions and then provide answers to those, because those are really good ones. You know, at some point, we want parents to come back and start volunteering again. We're going to need some clearance from IDPH to start doing that again. And we still don't really allow visitors, you know, at the district office either. So those sorts of changes will come. I don't know that those will go necessarily in return to learn plan. That could make a long, and then hard to find that stuff. But I think the FAQ, I think it's been really helpful, and then the responses that we posted, it's been helpful, too. So I would encourage anybody, community members, parents, as those questions come up, we'll direct them back to that FAQ link, that that question will get answered and then get posted.
And then, yeah, Eric brought it up that I was going to talk about as well, in regards to just education on what that education is for the vaccine. I mean, especially, and I think you alluded to it last time, where, you know, students not wanting to miss graduation. So maybe electing for a remote learning, where they don't have that option, and we're looking at more of a traditional school year next year. So the homecoming games don't, you know, all events that happen, you could be close contacted, but if you, you know, this is what the vaccine presents to you if you were to get that. That education, it's all over the place. If you Google it right now, I'm sure we all would come up with different opinions, is that something different? But if we can get that education to the parents of what that's really means, and maybe that, you know, that helps guide them into making a decision. Again, I'm not going to say here is everybody needs to do it or not do it or whatever. But I think that education piece is definitely important, so that people have understanding of really what it gives you, I guess.
Yeah, it's part of being informed, well informed when you're making decisions.
Fully vaccinated, no quarantine.
And that, you know, as of this morning, I mean, I met with Nick and Cory this morning, and I was still under the understanding that there was, one, if you were exposed to a known positive case, even if you were fully vaccinated, you had quarantine. You don't. If you are fully vaccinated, you don't have quarantine. So getting that information out, again, I think it's just informing the public so that when they're making decisions, they can, you know, all the time. The one thing you need is your vaccination card. What's that?
Well, you're allowed Spartan TV to get some messages across, make kids, excuse me, been vaccinated. Talking about that, I'm hoping there's a bit of attention for that.
Sure.
And just ways of getting good information out from people who've actually been vaccinated.
We did start a Spartan Chat podcast here recently, they've helped me with that, in all of the spare time.
And everybody does podcasts, so you can talk to some other, you know, some of us don't have that, you know.
I think Spartan TV's a great idea, social media. But the podcast, I talked to somebody this afternoon who had heard it and, you know, she thought it was kind of nice because I think she listened to it when she was out on the walk. And that's kind of the idea with podcasts. So the more we can get that out, no matter what the media, the better.
Hopefully, we can convince all the departments to promote that as well. And when they're promoting their clinics, they could list that somewhere. It only takes one sentence to make a big difference.
Yeah.
I think that's a powerful incentive for people to get vaccinated.
So I had one more thing, and I think I mentioned it last time, but going back to the form. On the twenty-fifth, when we unveil the plan to report, it's two weeks. So that's a pretty tight timeframe for them to turn around and see doctors. So when is the form going to be available? And are we going to put out a special blast of communication, say, by the way, form's available, you have until June fourth? And I'm hoping that it's at least earlier than the twenty-fifth.
So my goal is to get the form posted on the website by the end of the week. Make any final revisions that we need to, get it posted by the end of the week. That way, the parents can start downloading and getting to their doctor's office.
And once we get it onto the website, we need to, that's something we need to publicize.
That's the second part, is that not only getting it posted, but then getting a communication out that it's there.
It's there and you have to get it by June fourth.
Yeah, it's in bold, underlined with stars, June fourth.
Because I guarantee you're going to get called on June fifth to say, I didn't know it.
I didn't know, I never signed.
Probably August, but, yep. And, you know, there are always, you know, like, names are referenced, there's always questions that come up, you know, anticipate. There will be situations where there's a request for remote learning that makes sense, that we'll have to consider on a case by case basis. But really, for folks who have the opportunity, we're going to ask them to do that June fourth.
And then, when the plan comes out on the twenty-fifth, will you have decided what the cutoff dates are for remote? So if you choose remote, is it a quarter, a semester, or the whole year?
Semester, high school, middle school, and trimester for K five, because K five is on trimester. So just made sense to do it. Again, part of that was IBS, meaning those are semester-long classes. So high school, middle school, semester make the most sense, because elementary's on trimester. Kind of the same philosophy, but.
So there's no popping in and out?
No popping in and out.
So if you need a doctor's note to qualify for remote, you need a doctor's note to say it's okay for you to come back?
When students make that request to come back, we'll need to verify that they've been cleared. And, you know, for a student themselves, you know, it's the medical documentation. The challenge is still going to be, remember, their circumstances at home have changed, and the student was really healthy the whole time, but circumstances have changed at home. We need to verify that, too. The problem there is that now you're starting to tread on.
Yep.
And so how do we, the attorneys are going to need to help us that a little bit, you know? How far can we go, what's the line? But we still have a responsibility to make sure that, you know, before students come back, they're ready to do that. Other questions? Okay. Takes me to item five point oh zero five, which is future focused. Kind of alluded to this earlier, and I just want to come back to it. Would like the board to think about, as well as the community who is listening, just thinking about reimagining the school day. And this is something that we've talked about as an admin team and as a board during the board admin retreat. The traditional school day has looked really similar for a long time. I bet the traditional school day looked pretty similar for all of us here. You could probably even say our grandparents and our great-grandparents. Pandemic has pushed us out of our comfort zone and beyond the status quo and hope to realize we can do things differently, and we can do them well. So I'm impressed that we learned a lot during this pandemic. And there are still some areas where we're improving and recognize that we need to grow. But really, we've done a lot of things really well this year. And we've gained a lot of experience that's going to serve us well moving forward. And there's all sorts of opportunities that continually emerge around us. And I just bullet pointed some of these, you know, virtual meetings, simulation, alternate learning activities with partners in our community around the world. So there are local businesses who want to partner with the school, district, on different programs and initiatives, but you don't have to be local anymore. You know, with that technology, you can partner with people in other states, other countries, around the world. We can use technology to support creativity and entrepreneurship. Creativity, I think, is one of the most vital characteristics that anybody, student or adult, can have, especially in our world today. Innovation in the private sector, creating opportunities for internships, apprenticeships, and new careers. You can go online, you can Google teenage inventors or new careers and read stories all the time about students who have invented a new product or new approach to something that they shared and sold, and they've done pretty well for themselves. So there are opportunities there, too. But it's not just kind of pushing those high achievers or those creative students. So supporting students and helping them to overcome barriers and challenges. So we know that one of the groups of students that has not fared, well, has fared better this year, are students that have social anxiety, moving around in large groups, it's really hard for them. And some of them have done much better academically at home this year because they're not in that kind of environment. I've heard stories about when I was a teacher or a building administrator, trying to get students to come back to school, just to get them in the building to get back in the classroom and start learning again, how difficult that was. We've got tools to support students in those sorts of situations and others that we haven't had before. So what is the school day, how does that look different so that we can provide those supports to those students? Helps us to self-help, helps us to help students self-paced and individualize their learning? And then rearranging time to make the most of it. So I'll go back to the conversation I had with Nick and the high school admin team, just about looking at the schedule. And because of the tools and the experiences we have now, how does that high school schedule kind of look different? Can we stagger start and end times for students and for staff? In a way, some of the contract language is written, we talked about this, is that it's a number of hours in a day. So we've got flexibility that we can take advantage of when we start kind of moving the beginning and the end of the day to benefit both students and staff. So what might that look like? So I just bullet pointed a couple of ideas here, and we could probably brainstorm for another five minutes and then triple that list. One of the ideas that's been talked about in the district was that the flexible scheduling, growing blended learning, virtual learning. We don't necessarily have to use IBS to provide virtual experiences for our students in the future. You know, our staff can create and plan their own classes and do the exact same thing. We've not done that before, though. So we've got some tools now that we can use to do that, and it's just a matter of kind of jumping into the water. Anytime, anyplace, anywhere, learning. So I was going to say, these are brainstorming, not saying we're going to do these.
What, what? Some of these, I've been telling you.
We have talked about, right? So a four-day school week, you know? I've heard from a lot of people how beneficial the remote learning has been that Friday for remote learning, for staff, for planning, for working with individual students, or pairs of students. Whether it's, you know, your typical academic content, math, science, social studies, language arts. Sean is taking up a musical instrument. He gets to work with his music teacher and a group of two or three students every Friday because she's got the time to do that. So, and she has taught him how to play an instrument he's never picked up before. And he's done it really well this school year. So there are great opportunities on that Friday for staff and for students. So I've had people ask me, hey, can we just keep that Friday? Well, I don't know about that right now.
We'll see.
But can we look at doing something like that in the future, maybe? Year-round schooling, so stretching the school year out by taking larger, you know, regular breaks throughout the school year, you can do that. Variable start and end times, I talked a little bit about that, that zero hour. And I think the term that the high school admin team uses, eleventh hour, adding something at the end of the day for students who aren't necessarily in activities and you can just stay longer. for students who aren't necessarily in activities and you can just stay longer. We can, the school day can look like whatever we want it to. With all that we've learned this school year, it really is just a matter of taking some time, to take stock, reflect, and then decide, you know, what do we want to try in the future? Only limited by our imagination and creativity. Now, that can all seem really exciting, right? Trying something new and pushing yourself out of your comfort zone a little bit to do something you've never done before can be really rewarding. But change is not always easy. So we also need to keep in mind, I think, some other things. So communication is going to continue to be important. If we're going to consider doing something different, like a four-day week, just don't do that. Just don't talk about that to the board, and then vote on it and move forward, right? And you need that input from stakeholders and staff within the district, as well as, you know, families. And what's the impact going to be on the community? You know, if we're going to move to students being out of school three days a week as opposed to two days a week just on the weekend. So you need to involve those stakeholders. It's not just parents and community partners, so other, we partner with other organizations like KCC, Bushwalk Education Consortium. If we're going to start to do something a little bit different, they serve students from a variety of school districts. And they do a really good job of talking to each school district and coming up with schedules and calendars that fit for the most. And then, you know, most students, and then they're flexible on getting students to the program and getting out of program. If you start to really push outside of those boundaries, you need to make sure you're still working with organizations like that, communicating with them also so that they can still meet the needs of the students that get advantage of their programs. But our students don't go to school there all day long. They might go there half the day, but then they come back at some point, too. So they've got to be able to shift back into whatever we're doing in our schools. Got to consider the impact on non-instructional programs like activities. It's a big reason that students come to school and, you know, are engaged in school because they're involved in some sort of sport or other non-athletic activity. I'll give a little plug for Little Shop of Horrors, it was awesome this last weekend. That's a big reason that students come to school to get the activity done. You have to be willing to take risks and fail. One of the things I like to tell people is, try something new and fail at it. You know, if you're not, if you're not failing every once in a while, you're not trying something new and growing and learning and stretching yourself a little bit. So got to be willing to take the risks and fail, be flexible, be patient, have to be ready. Got to strike while the iron's hot. So if an idea comes up and the circumstances are right, you've also got to be ready to move. So we want to put ourselves in a position to do that. Also need to be able to recognize problems and be creative in solving them. I would love to say, when I initially wrote this, it was recognize problems and solve them all, or something along those lines. You guys know very well, as well as our staff and admin team, that sometimes other organizations put limits on you that you just tie your hands. Stakeboard of Education has been really very flexible over about the last year and a half because of the pandemic. But at some point, we all know that some of that flexibility is going to start to shrink back and become more restrictive. So we have to recognize that. We hope that they don't get too restrictive and still take advantage of opportunities where we can. So we need to be creative, and I think there's a lot of hurdles and challenges that we can get over or around. At some point, we're going to hit a brick wall, and we may not be able to do something, at least right now, that we would like to do. And maybe that goes on the back burner until the circumstances become rough. So we need to recognize that as well. So reimagining the school day was one of the future focused items I wanted everybody to think about a little bit. If you'd have any questions or suggestions, I think that's my last slide on the top.
If we staggered the start of the school day for high school students, maybe high school and middle school, where they actually could start later, would that, how would that impact extracurricular activities that usually happen at the end of the day? You know, like their team has to go to a basketball game or a basketball game or some, you know, some way event?
Sure. That was a big topic, has been a big topic of conversation, and the research that has come out on teenagers and their sleeping patterns is not new. Been out there for a while.
Yeah, right.
And I would say that in my experience, activities has been one of the hurdles there. And I think it's easy to just say, well, you're catering to sports, and now they're driving. They're not really. We want students to be able to participate in activities. And if they're out of the building on a regular basis for those activities, they're missing instruction. So it really does come back to instruction. But if students start later, they are more likely to have to leave school earlier and miss more instructional time if they're gone. If, you know, one of the other challenges is that, you know, we're in school districts who love local control. We want to do things for sycamore students that make sense for sycamore students. But there's all these other ties, you know, it's kind of like a spider web. And when it comes to scheduling athletic events, you know, the conference does that together. And there are really good reasons why that, that's a good thing. But you have to take things like that into account. And.
Is it a subject that comes up at conference meetings or, you know, has IHSA thought about this or?
I would, I would guess it's come up at conferences, meetings from time to time, not only our conference, but other conferences, too. And one of the challenges is, so one of the parts of that conversation that usually comes up that I'm aware of is, you know, if, I'm going to throw a nickel in here, say, you eight, let's say you're the interstate eight, and two of you want to do something really creative and good for kids, but the other six not necessarily don't want to, but can't because their community's not necessarily on board with that. You have to admit that changing something for two that's going to impact the eighth, you know, doesn't make sense. And that's usually where it stops. I think the IHSA would be open to conferences making those decisions themselves, you know, whether you play, you know, a basketball game on Tuesday night, you know, at seven or another time. I think they'd say, that's up to you. And really, the varsity is not the, the broad mind, it's the freshman sophomore that starts at five. So I don't know if the IHSA would block that or make it any harder. But, you know, some of those creative things I talked about in terms of reimagining the day, you have to take into account the impact that it's going to have on your partners. And ultimately, if that's going to affect your students. Other questions or suggestions?
Steve, what limitations do we have as a district for asynchronous learning opportunities to make up for lost learning over the summer?
So elementary staff is working on that. That's part of what I've asked that building-level team to do, is to develop some resources and make those available to families over the summer. So one of the things they'll do on that last day of official student attendance on that Friday, the 4th, is start to post all that stuff so it's available for families over the summer. So, you know, we have a fifth grader at home. So Sean's probably going to have access to adolescent fifth grade materials, but things that will help him transition to middle school.
So he can work ahead, too, is what you're saying?
Not necessarily work ahead, but just kind of keep fresh.
Okay.
And, you know, keep some of those skills home, you know, reading. You know, we always encourage students to read over the summer. It's easy to do that, you know, we, most of us have pretty regular access to books. Some of the math, you know, the science stuff, that's a different story. So listing websites where students can go and log in or download, you know, a game or an app. You know, so many of the math games now are, or math apps or games, you know, where you're solving a math problem to get through a brick wall. And so finding resources like that, that's one of the things our elementary team's working on right now so that we can post those at the end of the school year and make those available to students and families. That's it for the superintendent's report. Short sweep.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Open discussion and future agenda aims? Anything for open discussion issues, observations, questions? We haven't already asked. Future agenda aims? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, negotiations, and imminent litigation?
Move.
Second.
Moving seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shirel?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Dambert?
Yes.
All right, we'll go into executive session and then return for our final votes. So is there a motion to amend the personnel report by removing the Little Spartans EC coordinator position?
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Ren?
Yes.
Shirel?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dambert?
Yes.
Motion clear.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as amended?
So move. Second.
Moving and seconded, roll call.
All right, Shirel?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Dambert?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the custodial agreement as presented?
So, second.
Moving and seconded, roll call.
Davy?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Shirel?
Yes.
Dambert?
Yes.
Motion clear.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.